No, I gave him mine. Does everybody have a calendar for the agenda? Or do we run off? And then we're gonna print out what you're gonna see on the board.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for telling us that.
Tiki Fank.
But it was just such a small class. And I realize that's what he thinks about. Always, you know, they help them because they can do well. So good. Well, basically, I'm still trying to send speech to generals. Because you can call me Kathy. Is she Kathy? Oh, she's Kathy. I did just send her. Fact, it would be on here live on this. Yeah, yeah. No, next day. About that. Of course, no, it's like coming up. Okay, no, but they have an online. And he's one of their main reporters. Yes? Yes, yes. What is the 98%? I just called. Oh, I was supposed to say, um... I forgot all the walk-in workshops. I get too many questions. Yes, yes.
If you want to share with the person that should be speaking, who should share? Dean Mark. Very good. That should be, should be a... Okay, we have a moment to the mark.
Yes, the phone. What if you had other minds on a bump? Yes.
And we're printing off extra agendas and then we'll be bringing them in. For those of you that don't have any agendas.
And this is still contemporary.
Policy to order and have roll call.
Tyne.
Here.
Zelka. Lays.
Here.
Ames.
Here.
Solomon.
Here.
Fleischer.
Here.
Boylan.
Here.
Pence.
Timelock.
Gilberts.
Here.
Wager. Jones.
Here.
Ten frozen two ounces. We have form.
Certification of the open meeting law agenda requirement and approval of the agenda.
So.
Second. Tyne.
Aye.
Lays.
Aye.
Ames.
Aye.
Solomon.
Aye.
Fleischer.
Aye.
Boylan.
Aye.
Pence. Timelock.
Aye.
Gilberts.
Aye.
Jones.
Motion passes.
What religious faith you wanna lead today?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, our nation under God, indigent of all, for the reading of its books and all.
Okay, first up, under public hearings and presentations, we have a presentation, building and equipment proposal by Wisconsin Southern Railroad at the transloading site along the Highway 18 bypass. Wisconsin Southern is proposing to construct a roughly 5,000 square foot building with loading equipment valued at roughly $1 million to enclose the Patterson Sand transloading operations in response to concerns voiced by local residents. The DVSOR continues to search for alternative locations, however, in an effort to minimize impact on the local, excuse me, local area is proposed to be enclosed structure. Supporting documents, building layout, a site plan, and a landscaping plan are included in your pass. Construction would begin later this fall or early spring 2014. Beth, you've been to make a presentation or come forward and identify yourself more please.
And came up to them after Wisconsin Southern Railroad. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Good evening. I'm here on behalf of Wisconsin Southern Railroad to present a proposal to you to enclose our transload operation and build a, implement a landscaping plan to solve the US Highway 18 here in the city of Prairie Chee. With me here tonight to answer any type of technical questions you might have is Beth Reagan, who's in compliance and permits with Patterson Sand Company. Also Mike Murphy, who's the general manager of Patterson Sand Company, as well as Kyle Patterson, who is a managing member of Patterson Sand Company. Just to give you a little bit of background, Wisconsin and Southern Railroad, most of you are aware of our company. We're a local regional railroad company based out of Milwaukee, Wisconsin. We have four terminals in Milwaukee, Oregon, Madison, and Janesville. We have over 250 dedicated team members that provide service, freight service to over 21 counties in Wisconsin and two counties in northern Illinois. So we are a two-state regional railroad carrier. We are the operator of the state's railroad system. There's about 600 miles that we operate throughout these 21 southern Wisconsin counties. And one of our main charges is to adapt to changes in the economy, okay, good and bad. Obviously, the last four or five years have been very challenging for us. We have seen the last two years, the economy is picking up. More businesses and more companies here in Wisconsin are shipping by rail. That obviously causes us to look at more long-term solutions for keeping the economy moving. And we also have to look at solutions to today's challenges. We understand that there are hardships with the business that we do, both at the community level, but also at the state level. So I am happy to announce to you that Wisconsin Southern is in very serious conversations about long-term alternatives for our site off of US Highway 18. They do require a serious amount of conversation. It's not very easy in the railroad industry to just pick up your locations and move to another one. Typically, railroads this day and age do not acquire railroad property because most of the property is built up around it. And there's a lot of different type of encumbrances on the property outside of the railroad corridor. We also obviously have to care for the environment. So there's a lot of challenges out there when we want to build capacity outside of our railroad corridors. So we could talk about some of those here tonight. But I do want to talk about, in addition to the long-term alternatives that we are pursuing, and let me stress, they do take a serious amount of conversation and they, we have two serious meetings and many, many phone calls each and every week. We're doing our due diligence on these locations and I can't tell you which one is gonna be implemented, if any at all. But we have, we have a long ways to go to determine what and where the long-term is for what we do right here in the city of Prairie Chee as it relates to US Highway 18. In the meantime, we understand that there are some near-term concerns of the community, the residents, and the adjacent neighbors, and we want to present to you a plan that is going to address those concerns. Really, this is a informational presentation. We do want you to ask questions afterwards. We do want to try to give you the answers, much, many answers as we can. So please do ask any questions at the end. Let me just step aside now and... Okay, we're onto the second slide, which is the issue. I think I kinda went over the issue. The WSR, of course, has been listening from comments made by the city of Prairie Chee as well as the community, adjacent residents. And we are here tonight to present a plan that's gonna help minimize those impacts, mitigate the operational concerns, the environmental concerns that have perceived and real at the site. I also want to reiterate, again, that we are looking at long-term alternatives. Those take time. Those don't happen overnight, but we are heading in that direction. Well, really, what are we proposing and why are we proposing it? We're proposing a building and equipment, okay, to be enclosed at the current site off Highway 18 where we transload sand from truck to rail. And we're doing this because we feel it's gonna mitigate and result in a number of benefits. Some of the four main nuisances or issues or concerns that we've heard is, one is dust, two, noise, three, visual impact, and four, lighting. We feel, and we will get to the diagrams of the proposed facility, we do feel that with the enclosed facility, having the sand transfer equipment, excuse me, inside the building, it will control dust. We will have a negative airflow system, 10,000 CFM, and it will basically filter dust and contaminated air into a filter and then spit it back out into the, into the outside. So there will be no open air in between the facility and the outdoor. So we think that this is gonna result in less open area for, for dust. On the noise side, and I want to just back up to dust, Beth Reagan is gonna talk a little bit more about dust once I, once I complete my presentation. On the noise side, obviously, with an enclosed building, you're going to be able to control and manage noise a lot better. So all the sand transfer operations will take place inside the building. And again, we'll get into the details of the site development plan and what that means. The visual impact of all the sand transfer equipment, such as the conveyor belt and the bucket ladder will be housed within the building. And we'll also have a landscape plan for your review here tonight. On the lighting side, this facility, this proposal will produce a minimal amount of outdoor lights. We'll still want some perimeter lights on the building itself, but that's pretty much about it. The perimeter lights obviously are for safety, mostly safety, but also for our workers to work around the area at night if need be. So really, it's gonna, it's gonna have a significant reduction in outdoor lighting. We also understand and know that there's gonna be some indirect benefits in terms of operational efficiencies with this new building. First and foremost, it's gonna allow for more efficient loading because we're gonna have more modernized type of equipment. The conveyor is gonna be more modernized. It allows for quicker conveyance of sand from truck to rail. It's gonna be less time spent onsite to transfer the same quantity of sand from truck to rail. Also, potentially less switching activity on the island. If you can increase your throughput through a facility such as this, that requires less switching on behalf of the Wisconsin and Southern Railroad. Also, potentially less switching activity with mainline locomotives. We're working on a plan right now where we can move some freight rail cars with a car mover instead of locomotives. We're working on that. We're hoping to implement that at some point in the near future, but there's a potential that we'll do less switching with our mainline locomotives. And to the environment, that's the best thing to do, so if we can achieve that, that's what we want to do. Here is a rendering of the building, photo image looking north. Let me just kinda guide you through some of the specifics of this site here. We have a number of parts of this building. Again, this is a total enclosure of the rail and the truck loadout site. This is a view looking north, so we're kinda looking from US Highway 18. To the north would be the city of Prairie Chee, to the south would be the airport. The rail, the mainline railroad runs behind the facility over here, and then we of course have the sidetrack that accesses the site this way. Right here is where the trucks would come in, where they do with the driveway off Highway 18. Semis would come into the truck shed, is what we call it, one semi at a time, and we would unload it, one semi at a time. The, there's some further diagrams that will show the conveyor inside the building, but there will be a conveyor inside the building that will take the sand from a pit below the cars, and that will convey it up to this bucket ladder. And then it will deposit the sand in these 25-ton silos. And then this here is the rail loadout shed. So the sand from the silos will be dumped into the railcar, one railcar at a time. Also note that we do have a pitched roof on both of these sheds, the rail loadout shed as well as the truck shed, diverting all stormwater to the eastern edge of the site away from the river. You also see in this site, and we'll get into some more details with more photos, is landscaping that you don't see out there today. We have some spruce trees. This is just recommended with some trees intermixed. This is all considered to us to be negotiations with the city. If the city would like to see some bigger trees, different type of tree, we are more than open to accommodate that. And again, I want to reiterate, this is a rendering. You know, certainly the color, as you see in this diagram, it's earth tone, but if the city or the residents want to weigh in on the appropriate color of the facility, we want to consider that in our plan also. I also want to mention that on behalf of Wisconsin and Southern Railroad and its over 200 businesses that it serves around our entire system, we do have one other site that is under construction that's very, very similar to this. It's in the village of Oregon, same type of business, same type of need, okay, taking sand from rail to truck. And it's currently under construction, has been permitted by the village of Oregon. It should be operational in the spring of 2014. Will serve a very similar purpose to what this proposal is about. So then we look at one more angle, just photo image looking south. You can see the landscaping. We propose the landscaping to kinda curl around, adjacent to the driveway that currently accesses, accesses the site. You can see the truck shed right here. You can see the rail loadout shed here, the bucket ladder right here, bucket elevator. Apologize for that, it's a bucket elevator, and then you see the 25-ton silos, two silos here. And again, landscaping, we are open up for any type of suggestions that you might have in terms of appropriate ways to landscape this that makes it aesthetically friendly and of course, good for our environment. And of course, we have our photo looking west. Same type of facility, just from a different angle. We have the landscaping here. What we've seen here is anywhere between seven and 10-foot trees. Again, suggestions we have here taken from the community as well as from the city. Just quickly here, you do see the truck shed right here, then you see the taller structure, which is the rail loadout site, then you see the two silos. Okay, this is a building profile view, and what we really want to understand here is really the height of this building. And we have, of course, the truck shed, and then we have the rail shed. The truck shed is 100 feet proposed by 40 feet high. Actually, that, I'm sorry, let me back up. The truck shed is 20, okay, it's 20 feet high by 130 feet long. The rail loadout site is their building enclosure is the largest structure, the taller structure rather, and that's 100 feet by 40 feet. You can see right here, the conveyor will take the sand from the bottom of the truck and take it up to the bucket ladder, bucket elevator, and take it all the way up to the silos, and the silos will disperse the sand in the railcars. And one thing that this also does, as we talked about efficiencies as is a benefit to this system, it will allow for more, I guess, more defined volumes of sand to be deposited into the railroad cars. It's gonna prevent overloading, and it's also going to work to limit the amount of sand that comes out of the railcars on the bottom. So we'll be able to control the amount of sand that goes into these railroad cars with this modernized equipment. Again, we got the two silos, 25-ton silos, and the railcar loadout facility right here. We have the truck facility. And let's move on to the next slide. Okay, so from this diagram, we're looking at the width. It's kinda looking like an aerial here. And you can see right here is the truck loadout building shed, and then we have the railcar right here. Right here is what we call a baghouse. This is the negative airflow system, 10,000 CFM. So this will recycle the air and make it cleaner and take the air and distribute it outdoor of the building, make it better and healthier for the team members that are working inside it, of course. We have, we have a total square feet of a little over 5,000, so 5,090 square feet, which will be both the truck shed and the railcar loadout. The truck shed itself, okay, will be about 3,000 square feet, just a little bit over 3,000 square feet. And the railcar loadout will be right around 2,000 square feet. Okay, here's a site layout. Just wanted to show you this to give you a little scope, a little sense of, you know, how big is this building gonna be compared to the parcel, compared to the property? This is the property right here, so a little over 5,000 square feet. This is the building that's proposed. Just some key things to point out here. The light green areas, which lie adjacent facing US Highway 18, as well as to the north of the property, are considered to be seeded areas, so grassy areas aesthetically pleasing. We have the hatched areas, which will be like an asphalt milling that will help control dust and certainly be better for our trucks that are coming into the site and turning around. Here is the mainline railroad corridor. There will be no adjustments in alignment. There will be no new sightings as part of this project. We're going to utilize existing facilities. And of course, here is our spur that accesses the property. So, we have the faxed areas right here that we consider will be a hard surface that will control the dust, and we also have a hard surface right here. And again, really what we want to get out of here is looking at the scale of the building compared to the property itself. And you can see, of course, here would be US Highway 18. We would utilize the same driveway that we have out there right now. A little bit more about the landscaping plan. Right now, what we want to do is we want to make it a better plan. So, we want some visual barriers on the northern side of the site as well as on the southern part of the site. So, we have a company called Rivlin Nursery out of Monona that is looking and providing an amended landscaping plan. And again, we are taking suggestions and comments, certainly will help us guide what the best and most aesthetically pleasing plan would be. And next, I can go through a little bit of the plan that we have so far. This is the plan if you were looking towards US Highway 18. So, US Highway 18 is right here. We have this row of different varieties of trees. We have the key right here. We'll have about 11 different types of spruce trees, a couple pears, perch, and a maple right now currently built into this plan. What's interesting about this plan is we did have a meeting with the city, the county and DOT from the highway section this last April, and we had them down to the site, and they recommended and told us that requirements that these trees must be offset from the curb between 11 and 16 feet. So, that's exactly what this plan portrays. So, want to make sure that we're further enough away from the curb. So, that is in accordance with the specifications. Right now, we're in the landscaping plan. We are planning for at least seven-foot trees, so we're not going to be planting infant trees at this time. We're going to somewhat, you know, have some mature trees there, and certainly if there's a different height that the city or the residents would like to see, we're certainly open to that. Okay, floodplain. As you know, the railroad property is in a floodplain. Depending on the floodplain or the existence of the railroad mainline itself, this site is also in a floodplain. But I want you to understand, and this is of course in your PowerPoint presentation that you have, the building is obviously integrally associated with the rail site itself. It was designed for railroad operations. A site such as this is no different than servicing other customers that are not in a floodplain. But we've made a number of modifications to the plan to accommodate the floodplain, which we'll talk about here tonight. I also want to mention the building. Although it looks permanent, it is designed to be able to relocate to a future site once that future site is identified. So, it's basically about just loosening the bolts and lifting the structure and transferring it to another site. The building is designed to not be damaged by floodwater, and we have a couple other points here that will explain that. The site will produce a minimal displacement of floodwaters by building a volume at 4.35 cubic yards. In terms of, the building is designed not to be damaged by floodwater. Building will have overhead doors and panels to open or remove during a flood event, so we can take the doors off, we can take the panels off, to not impede the flood flow. Talking about the flooding, also in accordance with the floodway zoning code, zoning code, this proposal, this project will not impede the regional flood by more than 1/100 of a foot. The 1/100 of a foot, sorry. So, it, you know, when you get over that, then you trigger some additional guidelines in the floodway zoning code. Also, the electrical, the mechanicals, okay, the significant mechanicals inside the building will be located above the floodplain level 629 feet, okay? Other mechanicals can be removed. We do have an evacuation plan with notice of impending flood. Again, the whole structure and equipment continuing the floodplain conversation is functionally dependent on the rail site, of course, located in the floodway. We have found out that this is a not-conforming use in the floodway zoning code. It does meet the conditions of Chapter 17A Floodplain Zoning Code 3.3 also, which is standards for developments in floodway areas, general and structures. It is considered a not-conforming use. Okay, as far as timeframe for construction, obviously, right now, we're in engineering and design. That is well underway. What we would like to see is before winter sets in, we'd like to set the footings in so we can do some building over the winter time. And of course, construction, depending upon when we get the footings in, construction will occur in the fall of 2013 or certainly in the spring of 2014. And really, the conclusion before I turn this over to Beth to talk more about dust and some of the environmental impacts, obviously, this proposal is a response to the concerns of the community. The four main issues that we outlined, we feel that we've covered with this proposal. The building itself, as proposed, will minimize those impacts of dust, noise, lighting, and the visual impacts. Again, the building and the equipment can be relocated very easily. The building and equipment do not impede the regional flood by more than 1/100 of a foot. Of course, WSOR and Prairie Sand and Patterson Sand Company are evaluating other potential sites for long-term operations. And again, I want to stress this. We do take the concerns of the community very seriously. We do understand we have 600 other mineals of railroad. We have to consider the markets where various commodities are going, where they're originating, and certainly what the costs are associated with doing that type of business. But make sure we are in some serious conversations for the long-term alternatives to the site that we're at now. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Beth Reagan, who is in compliance with Patterson
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you all. Let's talk a little bit about dust to clear up some misconceptions. Here are a couple photos that were submitted to DNR in late July, and DNR contacted us and we said, absolutely, that is steam, but please come down and see for yourself. The DNR air specialist visited us on Monday, April 19th, to observe the steam that is present during the loading operations and to observe our operations in general. DNR's response on August 21st was inspected the rail loadout, confirm there is a visual that is steam. This operation is unique in that it is the only source so far discovered that loads from the dryer straight to the rail. The sand is warm, is 230 degrees Fahrenheit, still liberating water. No further action required. And this was written by John Stoffel. Interestingly, we find that people in the Prairie Des Cheneaux area who have complained about the dust at our rail site are, appear clearly not to be concerned with dust at other sites. And there is a lot of dust at other sites, not just this one, but around town. In fact, today in talking with John Stoffel with DNR, they still have not received any complaints about dust at this construction site. After further questions to DNR, DNR provided further response, and I will be happy to give you the whole letter that DNR wrote. But I'd like to read this to you. "In my brief tour of Prairie Des Cheneaux, I encountered large volumes of dust generated at hospital construction projects and at locations where there were unpaved roads near the rails along Highway 35. I also noticed that the neighborhood on the opposite side of the road from Patterson's location had homes on block supports with evidence of excavation activities. Every road that has a gravel shoulder will yield dust with every passing vehicle. The opportunities for dust are endless, and touring the community in full would probably identify more dust generating activities." Now, I bring this up because I want to give you some information about the new highway, New Highway 18, or as we all locally call it, the bypass. The traffic count on South Main Street in 2007 was 800 cars per day, 800 vehicles per day. The traffic count in 2012 on South Main Street, now US 18, is 3,400 per day. Now, you all may know that DOT does their traffic counts every three years. So, unfortunately, in 2010, the bypass was under construction, so I had to look at 2007. But I did contact planning in La Crosse, and they provided me with a 2012 count that they did take as a special count. Traffic has increased fourfold since the construction of US 18. Interestingly, the bypass opened to traffic in August, September of 2011. Now, Patterson Sand began our operations at Transalde site about the same time. We were operating at the site even before the road was open in order to get off the island for Country on the River, for Carriage Classic, and then I believe it was in October when we started operating there at a time. Now, I'd like to give you some information right from EPA as, this is what EPA lists as their sources of crystalline silica emissions. Of course, we would all agree, 33% on unpaved roads, 23% construction, 18% on paved roads, 15% agricultural tillage, 10% wind erosion, 1% mining and pouring. Part of the information that DNR responded back to the complaint, it says, actually, there is evidence mining is safe based on ambient air monitoring and the monitoring of onsite workers as monitored by MSHA. This evidence tends to be ignored. It is replaced with speculation. I have been doing air pollution compliance work for almost 25 years. Not until two years ago did I encounter people at public hearings for sand operations whom were visibly shaken and frightened. These forums are often attended by the same people. I have witnessed their speeches. When people opposed to a mine get in front of a microphone and declare that the community they are visiting will suffer the same illnesses and mortality as asbestos exposure, using Libby Montana as their example, the stress of frightened citizens becomes understandable. To this day, the air pollution information used to oppose mines remains void of any scientific or objective support. It continues to rely on speculation. It is unfortunate as this misinformation and misdirection clouds the issue of mining and how to effectively manage it." As written by John Stoffel, who is the air specialist with DNR. Ken and I would like to say thank you for this opportunity, and we both, as well as Mike and Kyle, are available for any questions.
Karen, you have a question?
Yes. Roughly, with putting up this building, when you're saying that in essence, this could be a temporary site, what kind of a timeframe are you looking at?
Well, great question. I can't tell you that where we're at now is considered temporary. We are looking for alternatives, and, you know, we, looking at alternatives, it will require us to purchase some land, all three alternatives that we're looking at. So, being in the railroad business, we have to go through a number of levels here in the state as well as the federal level in order to operate property that's not currently a railroad. So, we're talking probably four to six years for us to find an alternative location at the worst-case scenario, worst-case scenario. If we, if we could find an alternative site that's within the railroad corridor and purchase minimal amount of land, that timeframe would be significantly reduced, obviously even cut in half. But looking at the worst-case scenario, we're probably talking four to six years, worst-case scenario.
Did that answer your question?
For that question.
Rock, can you hand it up?
Yes. Many mining activity is totally dependent on the price of whatever they mine. When the price drops, the mining stops, and the United States is littered with former mine sites that were abandoned when that happened. We already have one ugly abandoned factory along that Highway 18 bypass. I would not like to see another. I would like to see some sort of guarantee that whenever this facility is no longer being used, that it be removed.
Appreciate the comments, absolutely. Yeah, that, obviously, that leads into a greater conversation, what are the long-term vision for the city of Prairie Des Cheneaux within the railroad right-of-way? I'm sure that we'll work with the business entity at this time, you know, WSOR responds to customer demand. So, we'll work with the current entity and determine what the long-term vision is for that, for the building, for that site. But at this time, if another location can be found to determine that building is going to that other site, that's what the plan is.
As far as Patterson for Beth, you know, the proposed mine in Bridgeport, is that going to increase truck traffic at this site, or is that the number of trucks per, like per day, and is that going to increase at this site, or is that something that is going back to Clayton and staying in Clayton? What's that say?
The proposed mine in Bridgeport is a quarry only, so the raw ore, the sand ore, will be trucked to Clayton for processing. And then pending demand, it may be trucked back over here to be loaded out, or it may be loaded out in Clayton.
Okay, going on that same thought, because I remember you saying that less time for loading out the semis and they'd be able to get on the roof quicker. But then to piggyback on his thought, then that means you could actually increase how many semis go through that currently, right now, which then, you know, like one of the phone calls I got from people was the fact that they find it very disconcerting. They have these semis parked waiting to get loaded, or whatever they're doing down there, so it sort of looks like a semi parking lot while they're waiting. But at the same token, if this is going to be able to be loaded quicker, then in essence, you could be increasing the amount of traffic that's going through in that area, and that sort of piggybacks on yours, you know? So, I'm really curious about that because, well, productivity, if you've got quicker loading, you're going to want to increase the traffic because you can do more in a shorter amount of time. And if you're already running 24/7, well, then that's even more semi-traffic, wouldn't that, am I misinterpreting that?
Certainly, to load the railcars more efficiently would take the same amount of trucks but in a shorter span of time.
But wouldn't you increase the number of cars that are loaded then, in a day, at that site?
If indeed, the demand is there, absolutely.
I got a question for Ken on the building itself. On the one picture he had up there showed the silos and the bucket elevator brings it up, and then he had a chute going into each silo. I assume that chute would be totally enclosed, there's no dust coming out of the, the sand that's all come off the bucket elevator into the chute down into the silo. I assume that's all totally enclosed, just the idea that totally eliminate dust is... that's all totally enclosed, just so I did it totally eliminate dust.
Right.
In your buildings, you have dust collectors, and where we have the collection of dust in buildings, there're going to be, like, monthly maintenance to keep the dust on, you're going to have, like, sprinkler systems in there in case, where we have one type of dust, you have another, and if it gathers in the building, it could cause a possible fire hazard. I know this stuff probably wouldn't, but other dust that might, you know, but I don't know if your building, we have to require you to have a, some type of sprinkler system in there, or?
Well, as, as Ken mentioned earlier, it will be a negative airflow coming into the building with a 10,000 CFM, which will be drawn through the baghouse and filtered.
But anytime you have a bag filter or bagging system, we've seen it in other places in town, you have Tennessee for some light dust to gather, and sometimes it doesn't take much for that, real hot day or something, for that dust to, you know, it's not going to come from the surface, and the sand that you're hauling, but other stuff that might get drew in, or?
It's part of air prevents, we're required to have what's called an MPAP, a Malfunction Prevention and Abatement Plan, which does list the tasks that need to be done on a routine basis to ensure that the, that the equipment does not malfunction.
You got to go ahead and follow.
A couple ideas for your landscaping you might want to jot down, just for the grasses. Now, we've been trying in the area to get the native prairie grasses reintroduced into the area, that would be a good, you know, site for that. Then transition, not only grasses, but you got plants and flowering plants. A lot of it, you know, requires little mowing, so, you know, I'd say it's running in the long run, helps filter the water through. And then transition to some type of wetland plants as you get closer to the, you know, river snow, or what would be a river snow performing well?
Good ideas. When we initiated the landscaping plan, of course, the objective was to provide vegetation that would make a visual barrier.
Karen, go ahead.
I just need to find out, is there going to be any kind of a zoning conflict now that you're talking of building on that property, Julius, Julia, or Ju, Julia Gark, do you know if there's any kind of a zoning conflict?
The property is own riverfront, and so a transload facility is not permitted of conditional use in that zone.
We can't hear you, Gark.
Can you hear me now? Sorry. Can you hear me now? If a transload facility, as proposed, is not a permitted or a conditional use in the riverfront zone.
That's what this is.
Right, this is a transload facility, right? Transloading.
So is there a conflict?
Yes.
Right, right, there is a conflict based upon our zoning, but the, the opinion of the city has been that the, our zoning ordinance is preempted by federal regulation in terms of regulating the facility. So, so based on the zoning, there is a conflict, also based upon the floodway, there's a conflict. But again, the position of the city has been that there's preemption of those regulations.
Gark, I'd like to follow up with another question on that. So if, if they would come to the city and say, "Well, we want to apply for a conditional use permit," we denied it, that does not kill the issue, then they could, they can claim preemption, go ahead without our permission, is what I'm, is that what I'm hearing you say?
The position of the city has been that our regulations preempted by federal regulations, so in other words, we can apply our zoning regulations, but if push comes to shove, in other words, our regulations are in conflict with the operation, and the operation wants to go forward, then we actually don't have any enforcement mechanism. That's been the position of the city.
Karen, you have a question?
Yeah, I've been back and forth past this loading operation many, many times in the last couple of years, and, and I've been looking for dust, and I can tell you, I've, I've seen very little, and I'm especially been looking in the winter when dust accumulates on snow, I've seen very little of that. I, I really don't believe that there is, there is a health hazard as the operation is presently conducted. But my family has a little personal experience with this. My, my father had silicosis for many years, and it sure contributed to his death, and it was from dust, silica dust. But he was working in a factory making toilets for the color company, and he was in an enclosed structure, just like the one that you're describing. So what I'm saying is, I don't think there's a health hazard now, but if you start enclosing things, you had better be careful, because there, there probably would be a bad.
Any other comments on that, any questions? Go ahead, Karen.
Just, I guess ever since this operation has came to the city, I know I spoke up in support of it, because it's bringing, I, I thought, pretty good paying jobs. Every time there's been an issue, I, I believe the city has always looked into it, and I believe that Patterson Sand Company has looked into it, the railroads looked into it, they've tried to come up with better solutions all the way along, all along. I, I feel that this facility would help immensely cut down on the fear of the dust, the fear of the noise, the fear of lighting, all that. It was funny that she brought up about other areas. When we moved in where we live, there were just design homes, but then Bennett Hardwoods moved in, there's all kinds of noise and dust from the parking lots, from the machinery. You go all over the city, and there's, I guess, if you have a complaint, that's your right to complain, and the city will do every attempt to make it as harmless as possible. But this is just another fact, another item that they're bringing to us to try to make this site feasible, working site that will help not only about the city Prairie Des Chenees, but the area for jobs and stuff, so.
Gene?
I'm assuming that, you probably asked, isn't quite catch it, but since in the floodplain and the DNR, you know, that's all been okay, that we're not going to, somehow the city's not going to say we're not enforcing our floodplain plan.
As was stated in the presentation, it is a non-conforming use, but the structure itself does not impede the regional flood by more than one one-hundredth of a foot.
Right, but I meant, but it seems to, but you have to go back to the DNR for the other approval? I mean, I'm just curious, you did that?
I believe the city is delegated to issue floodplain, has floodplain authority.
Yeah, you adapted the floodplain ordinance back in 2011, I believe, Chapter 17A.
But Gene, I didn't, I want to jump in, because this, this is where kind of the point of conflict is, is that if this building were being built in the floodway, and it wasn't a, wasn't a railroad building, we would not approve it, because it is in a floodway, and structures, except those associated with open space uses that are water-dependent, and specifically by water-dependent, it means things like docks, harbors, things like that, or historic structures, that would not be approved. So we would not, we would not grant a floodplain permit for this structure. But then we, we run into the conflict that the position has been that we're preempted from enforcing that standard. So at that point, in a way, we're not, we're reviewing it, but we're not issuing any kind of permit, because in effect, we can't issue a permit. It has been the position of the city.
Karen, you have one more?
Yep, my final question, I promise. Okay, what, if any kind of a difference in tax base does this building, how does that affect the city and the agribards through tax base?
Great question. I can tell you that we do not have the numbers at this time. Obviously, it would depend upon the valuation of the improvements on the property, but I can tell you that this building that you see here, this enclosure, all the above-ground improvements would be taxed under the ad valorem tax that the state of Wisconsin collects from railroads all across the state. Ad valorem tax is a value on equipment, value on the value of our rolling stock, our locomotives, our freight cars, as well as the buildings that we occupy and the buildings that we use.
And just to clarify that point, because I think it's where the state of Wisconsin collects that tax. You don't, it's an ad valorem tax, it's not a pure property tax, so we don't, we don't assess that locally, so.
Sharon?
Yeah, Beth, I'm sorry, am I being too loud here, I guess? Now, are you going to be using the track that's already there?
Absolutely.
Oh, okay.
Yes, there won't, no additional track is being.
Okay, yeah, okay, I'm just curious if I'm looking at this. Okay, thank you.
Any other conference person have any questions? Did anybody else in the audience have a question? If you do, come to the podium desk and put the mic back up there.
I, I had one question, I just, if I could jump in. Since, since this is on property owned by the Department of Transportation, and the rail is actually owned by the Wisconsin River Rail Transit Commission, do those two bodies have to approve the structure? My, my understanding is that any new construction within the rail corridor would have to be approved by WRRTC, is that, is that correct?
That's correct.
That's correct.
The Wisconsin River Rail Transit Commission and the state's shared ownership of the improvements, that's the track. So there will need to be an agreement, a three-party agreement between the DOT, the Wisconsin River Rail Transit Commission, and the WSOL, like we do with any other permitted uses, buildings. We do build buildings in railroad right-of-way in other places, and they're permitted uses.
Anybody in the public sitting up there have a question pertaining to the rail loading facility? Yeah? If you come to the podium, you can identify yourself for us.
Hello, Dr. Murray, please. Pretty much my questions have been answered. I do want to ask Beth one question, when she talks about the steam that we see that we consider dust, Beth, could you tell me what the temperature of that steam is?
I don't think we have measured the, the temperature of the steam, but the sand is 200 degrees plus.
So how does that affect the workers? They're standing right there, isn't it?
At times it can be warm.
Yes, so thank you.
Anyone else?
Is it just questions or comments?
Come to the microphone, identify yourself, John, so people at home can hear you.
Is this just questions or are we allowing new comments as well?
I'll keep it short, I'm commenting, if you have a question, do that first.
Well, the concerns of the neighborhood particularly, always first and foremost, was zoning, zoning, zoning. Look at the hospital out there, that's zoned for what's, what's being done, and when the construction's done, the dust is gone. Bennett Hardwoods added zoned industrial park. This area is not zoned, dust has never been first and foremost concerning the residents. And it's kind of somewhat disingenuous to say that this is being done based on the concerns of the residents. The residents' concerns are that somehow we utilize our zoning laws to preserve our neighborhood's way of life, the way the city operates, and have them move to an area that's appropriate for what they're doing. That's the crux of it. It's always been zoning, 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 and see we had sidetracked in dust, jobs, nobody wants to see jobs go away. They don't build this building, they're still going to have people that are working. And as well as, as they expand this building, this operation, it's going to expand the traffic, it's going to be noisy. There is no way that you can ever sell anybody in the neighborhood that having a large structure there sixty-some feet high is addressing their concerns about zoning. And real quick, you know, we said, you know, we find it interesting that those people in the PDC area who are concerned about dust at the railroad site are clearly not concerned about the dust at other sites. No, what we're concerned about is we're not enforcing our zoning laws, we're not even really looking for any avenue to enforce our zoning laws, because the way we would like to see it is, it's zoned for this, you can't do it, if you want to get a determination from the FRA or whoever, or Circus Transportation Board, PRG has to do so. It's never been fully about dust, dust is a concern, and it also is somewhat partly the trucks that sit there for three, four days, railcarers come in, it's 102 degree heat index outside, and there's still steam coming out of those cars. So if it is just steam, why are they building such a large dust containment structure? Because it's steam containing, right? But bottom line is, it's never been solely about dust, or that's never even been a high priority for the folks in there, but what it has been is preserving, preserving the neighborhood, our way of life and the comfort, and obviously, you can see that it is an imposition. Thanks.
Thanks, John. Would anybody else come forward and identify yourselves?
Is there anybody on the press here?
Can you identify yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Edie Allen with Crawford Stewardship Project, and I just had copies of this for you, and I just was going to give it to, to anybody if there was any press here. Crawford Stewardship Project has supporters in all of Crawford County, in Prairie Des Chenees, and elsewhere, and I'm here on behalf of them just, just to bring up a few questions that I'm, I'm wondering if you all would consider answering. This is a real, this has been a hard decision all the way around, this whole loading site thing. I'm wondering if this has been a discussion thing going on since April, if you, if you've surveyed the people in the neighborhood and asked them their opinion about it. It is zoned river, riverfront, and do they, do they want even greater industrial view in their neighborhood? And I'm wondering about if there's any tax subsidization of this, of this, that's going into it. I'm wondering if the, if the, why there isn't more pressure to get the loading site moved, and, and I would agree that, that even though the opinion is that you don't have control, I would ask that there be, that you do a whole lot more research on it. The, the other, the other item is that, I mean, if we're putting a million dollars towards this, it seems to me that could be put, a little bit of that could be put towards seriously finding another place that's not zoned residential for this to be. And I would, I would hope that the city would put a lot more pressure on the railroad to do exactly that. I worry about tourism, because, you know, there is a tourist, there is a study on economics out on frac sand mining by Dr. Powers, and it was put out by the Wisconsin towns association and the Wisconsin Farmers Union, because they're concerned about economics in places where there's frac sand mining. And I would ask that you research that, I can send a link to that, you know, to Mr. Kramer, so you can take a look at that. I'm wondering if you've talked to others in McGregor, your, your other officials in McGregor and in Marquette, about what it's going to mean when, when Bridgeport starts, starts mining sand. They're talking 250 trucks there and back a day, you're talking more trucks coming then back with this processed sand into the loading site. And I'm, there, your job is to balance things, that's the hard job that's in front of you. Patterson sand is economically important around here, so is tourism. And I'm wondering how much research you've done on tourism, and how, how much growth there is, and how much have you talked with tourism folks and effects on, on additional traffic? As to the steam, Marty Sellers from the DNR issued a letter of non-compliance to Patterson, and he, he will still say that's not all steam. And likewise, I would say if they, if they need to put dust control measures in there, that, that's, that's important stuff. And I really, really would implore you to get independent people to check out the dust in these folks' homes of those who are concerned, and get them tested. It costs some money, but it can be done. So thank you for your hard work, thanks for hearing me. Oh, any questions?
I can answer some of your questions.
Oh, okay, good, thank you.
There is no taxpayer subsidy going to this project.
Thank you.
Period.
Good.
I don't know what you meant by April.
Oh, that, he had mentioned that they'd already been working on it since April, so I wondered...
No, the first that I was made aware was a meeting that was scheduled. Tom, you were at that meeting, was that about two and a half weeks ago? About two and a half weeks ago is when the proposal was brought to us.
Thanks for that.
Trying to think what the other question is. No, we have not talked to Marquette or McGregor. And as far as the dust sample, I guess I'm confused. I just heard the dust isn't an issue, but now the dust is an issue. I read the testimony before the Riverway Commission that was filed by at least one of the residents saying that dust is an issue, and, but there's been no evidence.
My understanding is that other residents have come to you before. John wasn't saying it's not an issue, he was saying it isn't a primary issue from what he was saying. My understanding is that other residents have come to you with that concern.
Right.
And that was my question, that if there is indeed dust in their homes collecting, could it get tested? That was the question.
And I...
Tested for silica.
I, no.
I mean, I know that it physically can be done, but...
We have not discussed that.
You haven't discussed that, yes, yes.
We have not discussed that.
Correct.
With the city law.
Uh huh, thank you. I appreciate the answers, and thanks for letting me take these up, we lose the time.
Thank you.
Did anybody else have a question for me?
Sure.
What is your first name?
Edie Ailert.
Okay.
Yes.
When was this zoned neighborhood?
It's not, it's zoned riverfront.
It's residential riverfront, you're right, correct?
No, riverfront.
Riverfront, okay.
When was it zoned?
I think it's been that way since zoning was created in the 1980s. It's never been changed.
Okay. Oh, and I'm sorry, also, what was that plant that was previously there a few hundred years ago, whatever, I mean, 50 years ago? Was that the sewer plant?
It was the depot. No, it was the railroad depot, was the last known structure at that location.
Wasn't that the sewer plant?
No.
Fertilizer.
And that same site, it was the old railroad depot. You're talking about the south here, the old fertilizer plant.
Okay, what I'm talking about...
There's still remnants of that there.
Fertilizer plant, okay, thank you.
And the other question I think you brought up was about withholding the zoning.
Yes.
And we did explore an opinion from the Highway Transportation, or Surface Transportation Board.
Yes.
The council's decision was not to proceed due to the potential high cost.
Uh huh, okay.
And that's the short answer.
Okay.
We're not hiding behind preemption, but that's the fact that we've established.
Right.
It's not justified.
Ron, you have a question?
Well, just a comment on the, on the authority of the city here. The problem is the United States Constitution, which gives the federal government, and only the federal government, the responsibility of regulating interstate commerce. None of that authority has ever been delegated to state and local governments, and it never has been, and maybe it cannot be without a change in the Constitution. So, that is where we're at. That's, when we talk about preemption, that's what we're talking about.
Right, and that's why I was bringing up, is there things that we can specifically do for the neighbors, such as the dust?
If you have a solution, I'm all ears.
Okay.
I would, I would like to see that operation somewhere else also. And I just speak for myself, but I think if we probably took a vote here, that's maybe how the vote would go, but here we are. And again, if you have an answer to this very basic problem, I'm all ears.
I think mine was only that more money would need to be put to it to get more legal opinion.
But we don't believe that there's...
I understand.
Legal precedents.
And, yeah. And then the other is, is the health and welfare is always the responsibility of whatever officials, and so I have some concern on that.
And we concur.
And others have wasted it, and...
And we concur. And staff, you know, I think Kyle, I'm not stepping out of bounds, I've told you more than once, I wish you weren't there. And we've talked many times. Now, I know some people don't believe me. Okay, that's fine, I can live with that. But my calendar, my emails, my conversations with Kyle for the past two years have been, where can we find you? Staff's been on those meetings, the mayor's been on those meetings, the attorney's been on those meetings. It's not for lack of trying. So, we have worked. I'm sorry some people don't believe that. And as far as the health issues, my door has been open for two years, and I've said to the residents, bring me something, okay, that we can address with Patterson or the railroad as far as health. And nothing, nothing. I mean, have, I mean, it was made a comment, I think, in front of the Riverways Board that I asked somebody to bring a doctor's note. That's false. I said, bring in documentation, bring in something for the medical profession that says, there's been nothing.
Right.
Nothing. I can't, I can't make a case out of, I think it might be, or it might be, or...
So, you would want folks to bring in samples of dust and ask...
No, I can't, I have no, I can't sample dust.
Right.
I'm saying something from a doctor that says, you know, this is directly tied to this, then we can work with Patterson, but...
Right.
Nothing's been brought in.
Gotcha.
And I don't want a study that's, you know, I want something from a local doctor, something medical. But, once again, nothing's been brought in. Staff has, you know, seen this proposal, and...
Right, if people want to do, get the dust tested, it can be done. It costs many hundreds, and that is a real possibility that could be done, either by the city or by individuals to, to...
Right, individuals, and, yes. We've said that day one. Individuals certainly could pay for it themselves if that's what they believe.
Okay.
We'd love to see the results. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on then. Oh, yeah, did anybody else have a question? I guess you probably move on.
No?
Okay.
This is not listed as an action item. There was no vote by the council. It was a presentation, I requested this.
This may solve some issues. My name's Michael Murphy, I'm a Crawford County resident, work for Patterson Sand. If you read the report in full from the DNR, which they just published, it'll show that even if silica dust was found in homes, say you live on a gravel road, say you live near a construction site, you could not, which he stated, you could never say that it came specifically from Patterson Sand or construction site or any other, you know, anyone that's driven gravel roads, you can see the dust on the leaves, you know, right along the roads. Where does that come from? How much silica is in that? You know, I don't want you to go down the wrong path needlessly. So, if there's dust everywhere, there's silica and dust everywhere. And we try to monitor it and be as safe as we possibly can with our employees and follow the regulations.
And for the record, when there is a complaint, we do get the information at the city. We didn't get the information about the complaint, it was filed in July, it was determined to be steamed, so that, we had asked before, the communication is kept open between the city and Patterson, they have complied with providing us, when there was a complaint filed, that we knew about it. So, we knew about the steam determination in July. Once again, this is an act, not an action item, it's simply a presentation. It could be directed to the Plan Commission for vote on the non-conforming use. Staff's position is, regardless of what the Plan Commission did, it would be preempted if it was a determination against. As it is, there was no action taken, there was not even a need to have this here tonight. I did request it. So, there would be some feedback from the council, otherwise, I know of no other steps to do, or other than construction begins.
The building permit would still need to be done.
That's right.
And I'm assuming the state approved plan needs to be included, as far as building comes to that.
Karen, you have a question?
Ken, I have a comment. Confused, and so my stance from the beginning's been, you know, not, not going, just somewhere else, and I think that's been general consensus of this, of this board and body, but, so, it's a zoned riverfront. They technically were in violation of our zoning, been in violation of our zoning since operations started. I don't know how we can be in the stance of, you're violating our ordinance, but we're going to support construction on a, on a violation of our ordinance, even with preemption.
I didn't say support. That would be an action. This is a presentation.
Correct, I mean...
Staff concurs that this is in violation of our zoning ordinance.
Yes.
We've established that from two years ago. But I think Garrett made the clear statement, we have no enforcement mechanism.
Can we approve a permit on something that violates our ordinances? Karen, I mean, I don't know how we can give a permit to somebody if they're in violation of our ordinance.
Building is different than the zoning. Is that correct? Building is different than the zoning.
Okay.
But once again, you deny them the building permit, they're still going to build.
I understand.
You know, that's, and that's where it's different. And I know it's frustrating. And it's frustrating for staff, but...
Right. So, Ken, are you asking for, to have the council go on record, either still supporting or still having a move, you know, is that, I think that's what you're asking, even if we voted somebody for, somebody against, at least a sound record saying that, you know, we're trying to follow our zoning permits, zoning laws, but we have, you know, we've taken a vote, we're taking a stance, but the federal government won't supersede it.
Right, I don't, I don't, you know, I don't want this to get out, you know, and now it looks like we're in support of, I'm not in support of anything going on down there except what is zoned for a riverfront, which is basically nothing, green and it can't. So, you know, I'm not going to support any kind of building permit or to send it on the DNR for flood approval on something that's in violation of our ordinance. It's not, and again, it's not against the operations of loading railcars. I just don't like the operation of loading railcars, where is that? And I think that's the general consensus. I don't want to put anybody in the spot here, I'm not asking for that. That's where I stand. I know there's others here that feel the same way, but I just didn't know if it was appropriate to send it on to a committee when, you know, it's just, it's an odd...
There's no action item on here, so the council couldn't take a vote, we didn't schedule it as an action item. I don't know, technically, you can tell us to deny the building permit, it, I don't, I'm not going to take the police department down there and make them stop construction. I just don't have that power under the preemption.
And they'll build anyway, just like, we've said, you're in violation now, and then push came to shove, we're the smaller guy here, so we said, yeah, we're backing down, I get it. So, if they go to build, I'm just saying, I wouldn't allow permit. If they're going to build, they're going to build, I guess, what do we do? You're right, we're not going to go down there and stop it, it's going to happen.
I mean, it doesn't say in here that staff supports this proposal, staff, you know, they came to us, and my response was, I think you better take this to the council, we'll see on September 3rd, presented, otherwise, otherwise, people would have seen footings being poured and asked what was going on, and I think that was the worst scenario to happen.
As I, as I said, I also would like to see them do this somewhere else, but I'm not prepared to go to court and spend $100,000 of taxpayers' money on something that I would know in advance or in the...
Norma, you want to come to the...
I have a question, yes. It'll take me a while to look it up.
Well, she's running her way after Kim. That's just the same thing you said from day one when I heard you were in town, I said, there's no way we're going on down there, here we are, we're sitting where we're sitting, so. Okay, go ahead, Norma.
Actually, what you're telling us is, this is an information meeting, no matter what you say or we say, it's going to happen, right?
Basically, yeah.
All right. Is the city getting any money for this? Mr. Patterson is parking his trucks on Taylor Street, right? Taylor Street is a platted street, but not a developed one. And anytime you look down there, almost any time, excuse me, there are seven to ten trucks parked, sometimes over the weekend. The city should be getting something instead of just inconvenience, my opinion.
I guess you'd have to go down there and mark it out as active, Norma, and...
But they came in, what, in October? All of a sudden, they're there, and it's been going on ever since. And quite frankly, when they are working 24 hours a day, we cannot open our windows for the noise. That's it.
They requested, you did come one time to pave that area, and I think you were turned down for paving, correct?
Really, they did mark it on, and paving was approved.
The lighting was rejected.
I believe the parking lot, the heart circuit was approved, and after that, we requested as far as the lighting, and that was disapproved.
But the short answer to your question, Norma, no, we are not receiving anything from Patterson for the parking of the trucks.
Okay, if I wanted to park my boat down there, could I?
Could I park my car?
Or my car?
My camper?
It's public property. It's not his, it's not the railroad's, because it's not railroad property.
Make sure to move it every seven, two hours.
Yeah. All right, I can tell them to move the trucks, and we can discuss this with Patterson, they'll move them 30 feet either way.
But anybody could park down there?
Can we park down there? We can't cross it to go fishing. I'm not talking about crossing the railroad tracks. I'm talking about getting on that land, and they come and tell us to get off its private property.
Really?
And my grandchildren are not sassy, so they get off.
I think it's the right way to decide. This question's been posed to me, is there's people fishing on the bridge, and that is...
On the bridge, I understand that, and the railroad tracks. But to get down there to fish, which they can...
I'd have to look at the placemat.
At the sloop, on the sloop.
I'd have to look at the placemat, I'd have to look at the...
Okay, it's a street, it's public property.
All right. We'll look into that right away.
Okay.
Any other questions? Or move on? Okay, we'll move on then.
Before I go, there is a letter that was entered into the record by Mary Antoine on behalf of the Board of Directors of the Historical Society, that I received late this afternoon, you have copies, we'll put it in the packet, opposing this proposal. Now, four copies to the railroad and to Patterson as well, so that has been entered into the record. We'll enter the letter from Mrs. Ellerton to the record as well.
Okay. Move on to consent agenda?
No.
Father, if they be approved on a single motion and vote through the routine nature or previous discussion, please intitate to the mayor, council president. If you would prefer a separate discussion and action on council minutes of August 16th, 2013, finance committee of August 16th, 2013, police fire commission of July 24th, 2013, the redevelopment authority of June 4th, 2013. Do you have an option?
It was, it was, and two of them.
Okay, an awkward place. Do you need...
Are you looking for a motion?
Yes.
Okay, I would like to move the consent agenda then.
Go first and second on the floor, although in favor of that motion.
Right.
Opposed, motion carried. Move on to see administrative report.
I did hand out one additional item that Garrett sent to me today, as far as the Smart Bus. They say that students from Western Technical College with a valid ID from the school can now use the Smart Bus for free and increase the driver, drivership or the passenger ship. Who would go to pay for that, the college?
Yes, yeah. What will happen is that when students or faculty, and it doesn't have to only apply to when they're going to school, it could be using the Smart Bus anywhere, they'll get on the bus, they'll show their ID, the driver will note that, and then at the end of each month, the school will reimburse the system for that number of rides.
Just a reminder, tomorrow at noon at the Tourism Information Center, there'll be a presentation to mark the 75th anniversary of the Great River Road. Council members, the mayor, city staff are invited. Interviews for the vacancy in the police department to be held next Tuesday evening here in City Hall, that'll be a closed session. And I believe, we got the notes on the Unity Riders not coming because of the heat, shut that operation down. And I believe that's it, unless you have any other questions.
Okay, we'll move on then to citizens' comments, I'm ready... We'll move on then to citizens' comments, observations, petitions, public input. Please limit comments to more than three minutes if anybody in this audience would like to get out and say something. All right, we'll move on then. We'll go to committee reports and actions. The first one is finance claims. Mark?
Finance committee met earlier this evening and we approved the claims. I'd like to make a motion.
Second motion.
Motion to sit on the floor. Any questions? Sharon?
Do I have to do that? Do I have to do this to you? I'm just wondering, you've got this overview court in Grand Street, 83,000 to 1038, what was that for?
That's overview court in Grand Street. That's the water and sewer and street reconstruction down there.
Oh, with that store? No?
No. Guard down Bullmont was tearing the street down, replacing the water and sewer. This is using one of the bills that came in for that.
All right. Who did that?
Gerkey, I think.
Oh, Gerkey? Okay. 83,000.
Project Gerkey.
Really? Yeah, I know, I think-
Yeah, that's about 30 projects.
Okay, I have one more. Water gutter for new garage. Where is this at?
This is for the street department building. No, water department building, I'm sorry.
Oh, down by the water?
Behind the fire station.
Okay. That's it.
Anybody else? We have a motion to sit on the floor, all those in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is finance, proposed resort area sales tax. Staff will update committee on the proposed resort area sales tax. Staff is also recommending a public information meeting on the tax to be held in September. Margaret?
We were given an update from Aaron and also he's setting up a date in the end of September to have an informational meeting with the public.
Yeah, we're kind of like polling tonight, there's no action here, but we're looking at Thursday, September 19th or Thursday, September 26th. I was having that meeting. Is there anything? No, this would be a public information meeting. It would not be a meeting of the council or any committee. Similar to what we did with Woodward Jakers, the public can come in, we'd give a presentation. They could ask questions about this. This came out of a discussion I had with Representative Neareston. I said he thought there was some confusion out in the community, so my solution was, let's give the public a chance to come in. I don't think those dates conflict with anybody, so, okay. What I will do is, I will, I know Senator Schilling's office said that they could possibly be here, so I'll coordinate some dates with them. I'll let the local media know by the end of the week what date we pick. They have a meeting and we'll send out an official notice. Rest of the day.
All right, we'll move on to the next finance item. Tiff assistance for the new radio station site in the downtown.
You have a memo in front of you that I handed out this evening. The radio station, as you know, is relocated to the downtown. They've asked for a small loan to help, I believe, the tower reap that construction. This money would come from either Tiff 6 or Tiff 4. The money then would be paid back to the downtown revolving loan fund, not the redevelopment authority. And, is Garrett, is it still 10 or is it 11? 10,000, 7 years, zero interest. I think Finance Committee approved it, didn't they?
Correct.
And we'd still have to bring it back here if the next council meeting's by resolution, move the money around, require a resolution.
Looking for a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Sliding my mic. Any other questions, any discussions? Do you have a question, Sharon?
I know. I read that and I thought they'd end up paying, what, 130 some dollars?
A month. That's per month.
Okay, thank you.
That's the payment. Pay that.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else? We'll go to all of them.
Time?
Aye.
Ladies?
Aye.
ames?
Aye.
Solomon?
Aye.
Questioner?
Aye.
Boylan?
Aye.
Pitts?
Aye.
Tittleback?
Aye.
Gilberts?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, we'll move on to public works. Removal of streets from St. Perry Island. Staff will present a series of proposed street removals from the island which were requested by the committee in March. The committee action of August 20th was to recommend to the council for a September 3rd meeting that the following streets be removed but not vacated. Number one, roulette from Second Street to Bill Louis Road. Number two, Fisher from Fourth Street and Fifth Street with a bicycle walking path replacing the street. And number three, Bridgeboy from Second Street to Bill Louis Road and then Fourth Street from Fisher to Bolden to be closed through traffic with barriers placed across entrances to that section of the street that could be removed by city staff for special events and other necessary traffic situations. And the committee reviewed the issue again in the spring of 2014. Kyle, go on, you want to take that?
A map was provided to you that showed the streets. I amended it, I asked Julie to put in there, there's one section where it looks like